These are hot lights.
Oh, yeah. I do, but today I do not. I have just the one.
Bright lights, big city.
I'm sure if I dig them.
I'm getting some juice, huh?
Yeah.
Hey, forget charging stations for electric cars. How about phones?
I have an extra pen. These are breathers, but they're from this area of the care center, right? They have like menthol in them or something. It's really weird.
Yes, that's true.
It's kind of like Ben Gay spells. Just saying.
Are we on? Are we taking pictures back here?
She's tweeting.
It's my recording.
Oh. I want to smile.
All right, we will get this show going. We'll call the meeting to order. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is at the back of the chamber. This is a pre-counsel on our wet weather summary report from last year. Donna, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Chairman. Thank you for having me today. Approximately one year ago, we had to meet on a not so great occasion to talk about events that happened. And we did, as according to the resolution that was that you passed, number eighty-nine zero one nine, we did do a wet weather summary report and it was, I think you had access to it, I hope you all had access to it. It's a fairly sizable report. I didn't want to have to mail it out to you, but I hope you got ability to actually access that report electronically. I'm going to take some of the points from the executive summary from that report and go through them with you today and discuss the various things that we did over the last year to address the issues that happened last May. We had two extraordinary storms. One was in October of twenty-fourteen, one was in May seventh of twenty-fifteen. They were extraordinary in many ways, but both of them had street flooding associated with sanitary sewer backups primarily in the Huntington region. This is an area of town that's of lower elevation than a lot of the other areas of town and is kind of our canary in a coalmine when it comes to situations with our sanitary sewer. The Teresa Street wastewater facility was online during those, both of those storms completely, but it saw more than four times its normal flows. So that's pretty excessive when it comes to the amount of water that was coming to the sanitary sewer wastewater treatment facility. We had a resolution that you passed, eighty-nine zero one nine, and that's what this presentation is based on, that report. These are the primary areas that we saw where we had sanitary sewer backups. And both storms, you could possibly, this was the May seventh event that you see here on this map, but if you overlay the October storm from twenty-fourteen, you'd see a very, very similar pattern. So these houses and these residences and businesses were affected twice, both by these two storms.
Did the university have any backups at all?
The university?
On East Campus?
I do not believe so, no. And we're going to talk today about what we learned and some of the conclusions that we had. One of the things that I was hoping I would be able to get in front of you and say is that we found the hole and we plugged it. That would make me very happy to be able to find that. Maybe not so happy that it hurt, but at least be very happy to say that we can find it. There was one big hole and it was letting in Salt Creek and we knew it was, we got taken care of. But unfortunately, that's not the case. So we didn't find that to be the situation at all. We did find, though, if you look at how much water we had and the amount of rain and the area that it spread over, that these actually were very extraordinary storms. One was a hundred-year storm and a two-hundred-year rainfall on those two events respectively. The, we do have a lot, a number of facilities around the city that measure data from our collection system. We had twenty-eight actual sites throughout the city that we could analyze the storm from. We've used those, that monitoring data in the past to do some of our modeling for the city and so forth, and we have the GIS data now, and it provides us with some very good inputs to our models for this go-around for these reports. We do know, and this is kind of the bottom-line conclusion here, that the elevated level at our wastewater plant caused by the inflow and infiltration of water into the collection system is the major cause for those backups that occurred. So the old INI or inflow and infiltration is going to show up a lot in this report. And I wanted to put some graphics up here. It's not, sometimes it's kind of hard for folks to understand what it actually means to have, what happens during a sewer backup or a surcharging into the, in the sanitary sewers. Under normal circumstances, this is the way our sanitary sewer operates. You can see it's the house and you have the basement, floor drains, all descend down into a, with a slope down to the sanitary sewer collection system. So when you have a surcharge event, basically the levels go up in the system all over town, starting with the wastewater treatment facility, and you'll see that level rise in the sewer system. So that our actual surcharge line, or hydraulic grade line as it's called, actually comes up far enough that that water starts to begin to spill into folks' basements, floor drains, toilets, things of that nature. We have, and I have, have had at the Teresa Street wastewater treatment facility and Northeast wastewater treatment facility, standard operation procedures. These have been in place for a number of years for high-flow or wet weather events. We adhered to those procedures in both events, mostly focused around lowering that level in the collection system as far as we can and keeping it that way so that you don't have that problem with surcharging that would create that higher hydraulic grade line to cause backups in sewer, in basements. We also put on additional pumping and so forth of that, that nature, but what we found was that during those storms, it wasn't enough. So what we looked at is changing those standard operating procedures, and I'll be talking about that with the recommendations that we had. We wanted to change those operating procedures so that we could maintain this, basically a safe level of surcharge in the system. So that, yes, it's elevated, we see that in the collection system, but it's not reaching the point where it's affecting people's basements and drains. We took the sanitary sewer collection system model and we updated it, and we updated with a number of different information this time. We actually did some surveying, brand-new surveying out in this area to make sure elevations were correct, and it, a slight change in this area is very critical. So those surveys were critical for us to know we had the right data before we put it into our model. And we, and we have metering, additional metering data also that we are putting into the model to make it a very good tool for us now. So then it models the storms pretty darn closely. If you look at the information and the graphs that were produced from the model versus what actually happened during the storm event, they can, they fall right on top of each other. It's an excellent tool. We've also looked at the various basins associated with the collection system in this area. We do know that the Huntington basin, this basin that was particularly affected by these storms, does have higher-than-normal inflow and infiltration in it. And we need to do some additional study in that area to see and isolate some problem areas and maybe do some pilot studies in those areas to see what we can do to relieve that problem. This is also another interesting thing that occurred. We, since we did get the additional survey data and we have the additional monitoring data in the system, we noted that what we previously thought was not an effect, having those diversion structures where we can divert a portion of our flows in the collection system in this area, in the Huntington area, from flowing towards Teresa Street to flowing towards Northeast wastewater treatment facility, we previously thought there would be no effect there, whether it was open or closed. But with our new modeling data, we're now modeling much more of the smaller part of the system, not just the large trunk lines. We see that it actually does have some impact. We don't think it would have prevented all of the backups, but we think it might have prevented some of them. And we also know from our modeling that surface flooding in various parts of town contributed to all that water rushing towards Teresa Street, raising that elevation and then therefore surcharging the lower areas of town. Though we do know, we had a suspicion, and part of the resolution that we passed was concerning the siphons. These are the tubes that run underneath our creeks, like Dead Man's Creek, Dead Man's Run, to actually move the water from one side of the creek to the other. And, but the siphons appear to have operated correctly. We see no reversal of flows or anything of that nature, or complete stops of flows because of those siphons being surcharged. So we don't see that the siphons themselves had any impact upon localized backups or flooding.
Could you explain to me how the siphons work?
Very similarly to the way your drain and your sink works. It holds, in terms of your, you want to have water coming in on one side, raises the pressure and actually makes a flushing kind of, it forces the water to go down and then come back up the other side. And as long as the other side is lower than this side, it usually works and functions just properly under normal operating time periods. What we were concerned about was that we were concerned that the level in this side had gotten too high and actually would cause a reverse in that flow. And that would obviously cause a serious problem. But we didn't see any indication of that in our flow monitoring in that area, so we believed that they were operating correctly. Treatment plant flows, we know from the study that we have that our wet well, where our pumps are pumping water into the, up and into the treatment plant, if that level in that wet well gets above eighteen feet, that we do have an adverse impact over the collection system. We have found out, we've done, HGR has done some modeling of our primary clarifiers and so forth. We know that the maximum we can actually put through the primary clarifiers, it doesn't hurt the biology that's in it, doesn't wash it out, or doesn't affect any of the equipment there, is eighty-one million gallons per day. We can pump a total of hundred-and-nine-point-eight at that eighteen-foot wet well level. And we actually pumped a hundred-and-seven on May seventh. The difference between the hundred-and-seven and eighty-one is the bypass that we did that went directly to Salt Creek. And the data for the observed wet well levels and the Salt Creek crests that we see show that this is where we say there's no direct water inflow from the creek into the wastewater treatment plant. So we're pretty certain that there wasn't a direct connection there that would, would cause water from Salt Creek to actually back up into our wastewater treatment facility. So what are we going to do? What are the recommendations and things we're going to do in the future to help prevent this from happening again? We are, first thing we looked at is the diversion structure operation. We know that we're going to divert the water in the area, in the Huntington area, our diversion structures. We're going to make that water go to northeast as much as possible during seasonal rain time periods. It's just basically a matter of economics. It costs us more currently to operate the Northeast wastewater treatment plant due to the bio solids handling there. So that was the economic decision to have everything going to Teresa Street. But this study now indicates that during a period of time where we have a serious threat or potential threat for a serious storm like we had those two events, that it is better for us to have that water diverted back up to the Northeast wastewater treatment plant. And we do have a project in the upcoming CIP that does improve our solids handling at Northeast and therefore make that economical one-hundred percent of the time. So we would never even consider putting it back, that water back towards Teresa Street again after that project is in. We also changed those standard operating procedures that I mentioned earlier, associated with wet weather and high-flow events. And that includes, we're going to use, instead of using the wet well itself as a monitoring area, we're going to use that low point in our system, the lower point, I should say, that we put new meters in on, and that is the Huntington area. When we can, we can see what type of levels we have there, we can see what type of flows we have there now because we put in a number of different monitoring stations in that area. That will become one of our indicators we use, along with what's happening in the rest of the city. We'll monitor and maintain that wet well water height. We don't want it to get, ever get to the point that we had in an earlier, the earlier storms. Monitoring our incoming flow and maximize our flows to the plants. We know what that, we know what that maximum is now. We also are working with DEQ to see what actions we need to take with regard to bypassing and if we can bypass more if one of these very extraordinary events happen again. The big key here is looking at our INI program, our inflow and infiltration program. Obviously, with any kind of infrastructure, there's, there is problems with aging infrastructure. A lot of our sewer system is clay piping. It does have defects in it, we know that. And we need to continue to look at those various areas where we could do some improvements with that. We'd also like to isolate those areas that do have really high inflow and infiltration in them, possibly do some pilot programs, some smoke testing in those areas. And I'll talk a little bit more about smoke testing here in just a minute. But one of the things I want to really emphasize here is even though we have twelve-hundred miles of sewer pipe that belong to the city, we have more than that in service lines, and those belong to each of the residents and each of the businesses that go to the city. Those lines, too, are subject to the same infrastructure aging and defects that we see and can be a source of inflow and infiltration. So we do need to take a look at that, and again, a pilot program may be great to isolate an area and just check to see what the percentage of our inflow and infiltration is actually coming from those various aspects. And that one includes sewer lines, sump pumps, things of that nature, but do it in a localized area where we know we have high INI. We are working with Building and Safety currently to look at a sump pump inspection or sump pump program. A couple of things that are listed as options for us to evaluate are possibly changing the plumbing code so that any new home that's now required to put a sump in should also put the discharge piping in, if, at a minimum. Obviously, if they put the whole sumps and pump structure in, that would be great, but at least put the discharge piping in as a minimum so that in a case where a homeowner sees water coming in their sump, their first reaction would be grab, go to Ace Hardware, get your pump, and if you don't have any place to discharge the water, you're going to put it down the drain. And we'd really like that, to get those sump pumps out of our sanitary sewer system. As we have some posters up here, one of them shows that one sump pump is equal to twelve houses in terms of the amount of water that a house would normally discharge to a sanitary sewer. So, and it can extend for a fairly long time. I know during, those rains, my sump pump ran for months after that, and if it's connected to our sanitary sewer, it certainly does continue to raise our rates for, and we saw it in the rates at Teresa Street, they were elevated for quite some time. So we're working with them not only to look at the plumbing code to make sure that we can get that taken care of, but also are Building and Safety folks going to inspect on a number of levels for different permits and things of that nature. If they see a sump pump incorrectly discharging, it might be something we can take some action on or at least recommend to the homeowner who may not be aware that there is even ordinance that exists to say that they can't put clean water into the sanitary sewer. We're looking at increasing the pumping capacity at Teresa Street. DEQ will evaluate based on reducing INI. Obviously, bypassing the Teresa Street wastewater treatment plant is not the long-term answer, and our environmental, Department of Environmental Quality, EPA, is not going to allow us to do that, nor will they authorize it. It is a prohibited act. They, it's only there, we can only do that if we have, subject to, we have a health and safety concern, if public infrastructure is affected, something of that nature, then we can bypass. But they will not allow that as a long-term, as a long-term action item. As long as you have a consistent INI program, though, that we're outgoing and tackling the actual issues that are out in our system, where we are getting inflow and infiltration from clean water sources, they will basically say, okay, we know you're working on it and you're working on it in the right way. What we don't want, and what we want only as a last resort, is to have to treat this water. It's a very, very expensive alternative. It's water that shouldn't be in the system to begin with, it's clean water, and we'd rather address the inflow and infiltration versus building treatment capacity for it. Here's a quick diagram of where the various inflow and infiltration can come from. There was an interesting discussion we had about storm sewers. Sometimes storm sewers actually lay, they're piped underground on top, they're elevated above the actual sanitary sewer line. And if a sanitary sewer line has a defect and the stormwater system has a defect, you can actually get a direct connection that way, even without having a pipe there. So there's certainly different ways that water can get into the system, but these are just a few of them. We can have sump pumps, we could have, there's, there's cleanouts that can be uncapped, various other things here that can happen to get inflow and infiltration to the system. I talked earlier about smoke testing, and I don't know how long it's been since the city of Lincoln has done that. Have any of you, have any of you ever been involved with smoke testing in your neighborhood or anything like that?
Video taping.
But not smoke testing. Smoke testing is an interesting way for us to find defects in the system. It's better than videotaping because you can actually get, that actually gets smoke into the service lines and various other places. It doesn't get into your house as long as you have water poured into these, to your goosenecks that will keep the smoke from actually getting into your house. But it does provide us with pictures like this, where you can see actual smoke coming up through the ground.
Wow. Antigula.
And, yeah. And you also, this is one where we have the open cleanup, cleanout area, so you can actually see where you've got the defects in your system. And it's a pilot program we'd like to start working on in areas where we know we have some high INI going on throughout the.
That'll freak people out.
Yeah.
What's that coming up through the system?
No, those are cracks in your, in your pipe. Yeah, yeah. Not this one on the end. That's a, that's actual, that's a, that's a cleanout.
Oh.
It just doesn't have the cap on it.
My lawn is smoking.
And then here's some things that we've put out, and we put them out in public service announcements, we've put them out in a number of other open houses that we've had. JEO has helped us put together these, these posters that you see around the room. These are all on our website and available for people to take a look at things they can do. But this is what we tried to recommend to folks, is make sure your homeowner's insurance policy for backup protection is there. This is not a common thing to get insurance for, and it certainly is a rider that you can put on any of your insurance policies. Have your own lateral line evaluated in terms of being able to see if you have defects in your line. Most, obviously, no one wants to have to replace a service line, and there are ways now that they can do actual coating inside the pipeline, that you don't have to take the whole thing out if it's just got some minor defects in it. We've, we've actually said or promoted installation of backflow prevention devices. Those are really great check valves that are in the system, and I think we've got some pictures of those around the room somewhere, too. But we had an operating one that we took to our open houses to let people know what they look like. They can be installed in your service line, and anytime there's a backflow from the actual sanitary sewer collection system, it will close a valve to protect your house. Now, obviously, when that valve is closed, you can't be flushing toilets and running showers because that will back up into your house as well. Check for other inflow sources. Sump pumps should discharge outside. Beware of whatnot to put down the drain, like greases, oils, fats, things of that nature that could potentially clog that. So we had nine tasks on that resolution that we passed along with this report that I'm presenting today, and I'll go through these really briefly. Our first task was to do continued periodic video inspections. We did do the video inspection of the Huntington area. We didn't find anything there that was a high-priority defect, and what I mean by that is we grade our defects in the system, and by grading those, we then do the selected high-priority defects each year for repairs. And we didn't find anything that we have, could consider a high-priority defect in that area. What we did find, though, were common defects that were in clay pipes because that's what we basically have in the Huntington area, and we have put into the budget now the cost of actually doing the cured-in-place pipe, which is what I was discussing about having the material actually blown into the pipe and then it actually adheres to the wall and seals it. You can do that in mains, you can do that in service lines as well. Again, the siphons here, we didn't find anything there that was a problem. Flow monitoring points to no rivers flows, no known defects were found. That was the second task of the resolution. The third task was to gather and analyze flow data within the system and check to see whether we had higher-than-normal flows. We do, we did do, we had twenty-eight existing sites within the system that we collected data from, and we used those results to do the modeling for the system, and we added eleven new monitoring stations, so we put them specifically in this affected area. This is a, we only had four, at least it appears from this map, only four in the area before. These are the monitoring stations we actually have on our trunk lines. That was before May seventh. After May seventh, this is what we've got. We've got eleven more out there. We think we can very, very well look and see what the status of the system is in this area and use those numbers and those values to be able to determine what our next action We looked at the option of routing more wastewater on a permanent basis to Northeast wastewater treatment facility, and I spoke about that a little bit earlier, but I also want to say with the additional surveying that we've done, we may have some options to permanently re-pipe some of this, the Huntington area, so that it goes to northeast on a regular, on a normal basis. And we're looking at, the engineering's underway for those. We, if we do some construction, we'll expect that this fall, so we'll try to get on that as soon as we can. Task five, we did have Corolo to do our modeling. They put together the information from the data, but they also took a look at much smaller pipes. We had modeled before strictly on our trunk lines, which were the very big pipes, and we took it down to a much smaller pipe so that we could see what's actually happening much closer to home in terms of closer to the actual basements. So basically, we, we looked at this data, we now know, and from the data, we can tell where there are areas of high inflow and infiltration. We would like to do, develop a pilot program in this area and actually focus on doing some inflow and infiltration reduction. And that can mean anything from lining to rehabilitating, replacing, whatever we need to do in that area. Task six was the Department of Review and Evaluate the Current Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Program. We've had this program in place since the eighties. It is basically how we do our videoing and our cleaning and things of that nature, but inflow and infiltration. We also looked at what was done in the eighties. They had a serious rainstorm event that caused them to question their, the integrity of the pipes at that time. And so we, we looked at those types of things that they did, and we're taking activities from them and actually putting, putting together a program right now, a much more inclusive program that includes smoke testing and some of the other things that we discussed today. We looked at the wastewater treatment facility, and we are looking at maximizing those flows. We're looking at increasing the size of the pumps and our head, our wet well. We are continuing discussions regularly with DEQ to talk about what we can include in our standard operating procedures to deal with higher-than-wet, higher wet flows that, wet weather flows that can't go through the primary system. And any type of treatment, we are not proceeding with engineering on treatment, that would be a last resort for us if we didn't have success with our inflow and infiltration Eight would be, eight was the written report, which was submitted and hopefully available to everyone. And this, the last nine was the Department of Review and Evaluate the Effectiveness and/or Anticipate Impact of a Proactive Program to Encourage Businesses and Homeowners to Correct Any Improperly Installed Sump Pumps. We did do public service announcements, brochures and mailings, and we are working with Building and Safety right now. We hope, possibly will work on doing a pilot study in the same manner as we did before. So we're trying to encourage the proper installation. We found- We found that we end up having another problem when we do encourage proper installation that in the wintertime, when sump pumps discharge outside, they create an ice patch. And sometimes that's a problem, too. So we're dealing it from both sides of the coin with regard to sump pump discharges. And finally, we want to thank everybody that helped with this. Members of the community that participated in our open houses. We've had two of them so far. We have a third one coming up to talk about this report. And we, and all of those folks that communicated their concerns and recommendations. My staff at wastewater have done, did an outstanding job during those two major events and since then in trying to help out to determine what things we can do to make things not happen like that again. And of course, you, council members and mayor for their support and understanding during this time. Our consultants are here with, in terms of if you have any questions. Certainly, my staff is here if you have questions. But we had a number of consultants help us out with this effort, and they're listed here. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Shane?
Donna, I was wondering, for those families that made application for the emergency funding and they had home visits by the inspectors, did the inspectors also look at the sump pumps if those homes had them? I know they're old, they were older homes, right?
The primarily the wastewater folks that were out there and did the inspection, those were during the rain events. So they would not have been looking for the sump pumps. They were just out there verifying whether this residence had a sewer backup or whether it was stormwater or whether it was a private service line or a surcharged city line. So they would not have looked at anything other than whether or not, and they were very busy at that time.
Interestingly enough, though, at the open house, I've asked that question to those folks that were there. And we had fairly good crowds both times. And most, all of them will say they discharge outside, so...
Other questions? Carl?
Yeah, the sump pump topic. There are other cities that have had similar policies in place to inspect sump pumps. How has that gone? What has the community been responsive to it and how has it reduced flow?
There's a, actually, we did, we collected some information. I can certainly provide that to you on different types of programs that are out there. We have a listing right now of a number of different types of sump pump programs. A lot of them are cost shares, and that works fairly well. A lot of them are just the city went in and said, you know, we're taking this area, whatever it is, and we're going to go in and inspect and we'll change it and take the cost on themselves. Others are loan programs, something of that nature, just to affect to say as long as we don't have to expand the treatment plant, you know, we'll do what we can. It's a slow process because normally you can only budget for a certain amount each year. So, but there are various different kinds of things that cities have tried around the nation. And I can certainly provide that report if council would like that.
I'm also interested in terminology, the transportation from what's going through the Teresa plant into the northeast plant now. And you indicated that there's a CIP project to do some of that?
The reason, the reason, we have diversion gates in the system. And there's a certain part of it that can gravity flow either way. And it's hard to understand. But in terms, if we point the valves or the gates one way, then the water will gravity flow to Teresa Street. And we can do it, we can switch it and go to northeast. But the reason we had it going to Teresa Street was the handling of the biosolids that come from the wastewater is much more effective at Teresa Street. It's a lower cost for handling that material. We just don't have the equipment and the structures up at northeast to do that. We have a project in the CIP to actually put that, those structures in at northeast. So the cost would be basically the same either way.
Can I follow up on that question, Donna? So it's going to be in the CIP, but right now, can you divert to the northeast plant from Huntington Basin?
We can. It just costs us more money to handle the biosolids. And we can do that. And we're taking that step. That's part of what came out of this report, was that we would, during our wet weather seasons, divert that water to the northeast wastewater treatment facility.
So that, that's a solution right now that we can take up? Okay.
Lurian? Good job.
Couple of questions. One is following up on this diversion model. So this, the analysis that was completed confirms that the northeast treatment facility could handle the diverted? I mean, you're not going to divert more than it can handle?
Correct. No, we would not.
Okay. And then just bigger picture, with these pilot programs that'll help address the INI reduction, you mentioned lining and replacing rehab. The specifics are, we just kind of did a high-level review of them. But are you feeling confident that these measures that you're recommending are taken can actually address the full capacity of 100-year or 200-year storm event like we've seen? I mean, is this going to solve the problem is basically the question? Like, are these measures designed to be the right size for the size of the problem we've faced?
I think what we're trying to look at is the impact for those. So if we do a pilot program, we can see what percentage of INI we can actually decrease in that area. And then we can expand the program to further across the city, which is what we're really looking at ultimately. Because you need to get that water, we just need to get the water out of the system completely. The, the, an INI program is a slow program. It's something that obviously does not happen where we can go out and do wholesale lining of pipes everywhere and be done with it. It actually takes some time. And if we do any kind of cost share in order to get folks more motivated to actually do something on their own property, that's obviously money that has to be budgeted into the system as well. So it's not something that's going to solve the problem for 100-year or 200-year storm that happens next year. It's going to take some time. It'll be an effort over a number of years.
John? I'm just looking at page nine here. We had a drawing and just the purpose to show where you're saying our mains that hook in from individual service, the mains can be lower, so you want to keep that since it's a gravity-fed system.
Right.
When you look at the various topology, topography or the hilliness in the city at various points, how does that all work? Because ultimately, don't you have to have the main collections at the lowest?
They have to be sloped, all of the lines have to be sloped at a certain grade. That's by standards, how you build a sanitary sewer system. Maybe Ron can help me. Oh, Brian? Well, good.
Get the engineers.
Get the engineers up here. And that's very, that's very true. So they are actually designed that way. And in terms, they have to have that slope there. That's part of the requirement. When it gets to a certain point where we need to pump, then we have to have a pump station in there to be able to raise it back up so that it can gravity flow again. Brian, do you want to add to that?
I guess, John, could you restate that question a little bit?
Well, just the idea, if it's a gravity fit.
Right.
You just got to keep going down and so you keep that flow going. And so ultimately, say you don't have the pump station. Before it gets to the treatment plant, that's got to be, so it's the lowest, lowest point. All these collections in the hills and the various levels of your...
Teresa Street is the lowest point for the geographical area that it serves. So if you picture Huntington, those lines are sloped, but they're not as far underground. And that area is kind of lower overall in the city versus the south end of town where those lines are climbing and climbing and climbing. And they're, you know, 100 feet higher at the end of their line than they are down in Huntington. But it all flows by gravity to Teresa Street, which is the lowest point.
And you just said what I was leading up to. And so obviously, for pictorial purposes, you show the service line to an individual's home or something coming down like that. But unfortunately, because you only get those sanitary mains at a certain level, I suppose some of the service from an individual or business may not go that much lower to get to the main. Is that a fair statement or the collection system?
I think you could say that in this particular area where the backups occurred, their basement levels are probably not very higher than the sanitary sewer out in the street. And that's probably why they backed up because the hydraulic grade line came up like the other picture in the presentation.
And so that's what we really need to plan for, are those lower spots? Just keep it that safe level, as you call it, safe surcharge level.
And that's exactly... And that's exactly why we've added all those monitoring stations, particularly in that area.
So you've got the monitoring stations. Another event happens. So again, you're going through some of these stages and diverting to northeast or...
Hopefully, we will have that already diverted because we're taking that as a seasonal activity to do that. What, and Steve Prissler's here, too. What we have normally going on before any storm, if we know it's going to be a rain event, we try to get the system as low as it can go in terms of level of material in the system. That gives us some storage capacity. And then, of course, as the water rises, we'll be watching the areas that we have monitoring areas for. We watch the wet well, see what's happening there. And we try to pump as much as we can through the treatment plant for treatment. And then we, if need be, in order to protect those basements and protect our infrastructure, we will bypass at that point.
And some of these are rather short and medium term. I know there's been some talk of doing some major flood studies and all, just for a whole area where we would, it could be a massive 100-plus million dollar project or whatever. How do you see any of these findings factored into that?
We do know that a piece of the inflow into the system was, came from the areas that were underwater. So if we can prevent some of those areas from flooding, obviously, that water's going into people's basements from floodwater. It goes down the sewer drain just like anything else would. So it is a source of inflow for us. So if we could get, keep those areas from flooding, it could have an impact in keeping that material out when it's a rain event like that.
Let me make my final observation question now. Have you taken a formal position from the city's standpoint on individuals or residences putting in backflow preventers?
We have, I don't know if we had a formal. We certainly have recommended it. It's on our sheets, it's on our website right now, to go ahead and do that as a protection for their house, especially those folks that have been hit twice. I mean, they, it's not a good feeling to every time it rains to think that something like that's going to happen, so...
Thanks. Going back to the diverting from the Teresa Street to northeast, you said we have the capability of processing the biosolids at Teresa Street. So when we divert to the northeast, do we have to bring that water back?
No. We do have processing capabilities at northeast. It just costs more to do it. So it's an economical decision to do that.
Okay, and I, that's when I misunderstood what the economics was. Thank you.
Roy, go ahead.
So when you divert from Teresa Street to the northeast plant, is there, is it all or nothing? Or is it, we're going to divert 40%?
It actually just takes off, I think it's about 3 million gallons per day that we can actually divert over there. Because it's just, it's just...
You can't just divert all of it?
No. No. It's just the way the gravity flows that allows us to be able to do that.
The diversion structure's on Huntington and about Fortieth Street. So it's only from that point to the east of Denman's Run. That's the only geographical area that can be diverted to northeast.
So on page 14, are those sort of the high-level recommendations? Is that, that's where you bullet out, expanding INI reduction program, possibly considering changing the plumbing code for sump pump inspections, increasing the pumping capacity at Teresa Street, and wet weather treatment and storage as a last resort? I mean, is that the high-level view?
Yeah, 13 and 14.
13 and 14. So if I'm a homeowner who's been subject to some of the worst damage last year, and last night's rain, I think, probably gave us all pause as it came pouring down a year and a day to the May 7th storm, what can I expect to be different in the short term? What, how is my basement any more or less, more protected?
From the city's operations, we have modified our standard operating procedures. We will take actions probably sooner than we did before because we have the monitoring stations out there to know exactly what's going on in the system, which I think is very critical. We only had four monitoring stations out there before. We just didn't have enough to be able to tell us what was going on. So that's very critical. We will have that diversion structure changed so that at least as much as we can is being diverted to the northeast wastewater treatment facility at this time. We are looking at in the fall, seeing if there's some other, some other options to get a little bit more of that area diverted to northeast as well on a permanent basis. So we are taking those two particular steps that are effective right away. I mean, we're doing it now. So that's not even an issue. And I guess in terms of, if you're saying that you're worried about, you know, the next couple of weeks, if you're going to get a rainstorm and what can you do? Again, that backflow preventer is a big thing. That's, that will prevent you from having a backup. It has to be maintained and it has to be, you have to recognize that it's there. But that's certainly something you can do in the next two weeks if you want to in order to protect your household.
I wanted to follow up on what Lurian asked. With those homes that are west of Fortieth Street, probably the backflow preventer device is a very good thing. It seems like those that are east of Fortieth Street might have a little bit more relief or surety going forward that a large rainfall like what we had in May and October might not impact them as much as it did. So then for a residential backflow prevention device, does that need to be annually inspected?
It should probably be annually inspected and cleaned, yes. I would recommend that. And a lot of them have the capability of having, the homeowner can do it. You can actually pull the flap, the whole flap valve out and clean it off and put it back in. And as I even understood it, some, from some of the residents in that area that had it installed in their basements, they can have an actual clear piece on top so they can see when the valve is closed, which is important to know if you're in a household with, you know, and you have a storm going on outside. If it's a prolonged all-day rain, you'd certainly like to flush your toilets and be able to see if that valve is closed or not is critical.
Do you have a point in time where you do anticipate diversion will be a routine thing for those homes that are east of Fortieth Street? And then when do you think in a point in time where those homes, you're going to be trying to expand that, that area west of Fortieth Street? Is there any identifiable, I mean, you said you want to divert, and you can divert now, but you can only divert some, a portion? Okay.
We have, from the survey data that we got this time, we have some other options to divert a tiny bit more. But in terms of gravity flow, there's only so much we can actually physically divert. It's not being pumped. This is all still gravity flow.
Okay. So I think less things are, that with the homeowners, they should have a little bit more assurance that with all the additional monitoring, the response could be quicker. And you can take the action to divert sooner than, but it'll still only be a certain percentage. And it really will be more beneficial to those that are east of Fortieth Street at this point in time.
Well, it is beneficial to the other people because you're stopping that flow from coming down their pipes.
As much going down their pipes by diverting to the neighbors.
It'll benefit the whole area.
Carl?
Okay, thanks. So Donna, is that kind of summarize what I'm getting here? There are a lot of things. Some kind of quick fixes, others, long-term things that can be done to help address the problem. But if we still get that 200-year flood again, we're facing the same issue. So we've got two choices there, it looks like, from what I'm reading here. Bypass decision from DEQ protocol to get that done. Do you have to do that, have that approval in advance? Or do you just call them and say?
No. If it's imminent that we're having a potential problem with sewer backups or equipment failures or things of that nature, then it's something that you report afterwards. And you'd have to take samples and you'd have, there's an actual procedure.
Like teenagers act now and ask later. Then, then tell us about this, this option which you clearly don't like, this last resort storage thing. What's that?
There's a, there's a whole, there's a lot of issues associated with that. It started out with EPA as being something that many Kansas facilities had done. This is a treatment that's kind of, you can't, you can't grow the biology to treat wastewater instantaneously. So if you get a big flush of rainwater into the system, which is not supposed to be there anyway, then you have to divert it to a treatment system that's more of a sedimentation, a quick shot of chlorine to make sure you disinfect it kind of thing. It's not full treatment. Kansas, a number of cities in Kansas put these types of facilities in it. Tens of millions of dollars per municipality. And then EPA came back and said, no, that's not right. You can't do that. You can't blend those together. And because you're not using biology to treat your wastewater, you're not fully treating it. Now, this has been reversed in our region. So they actually went to court with this and it actually was reversed. That said, if you can blend the water together and meet your limits, then we don't necessarily care how you treat it, kind of thing. So that's, that's an advantage. But you always run the risk of EPA changing their mind on that because they approved the original facilities in Kansas. that, because they approved the original facilities in Kansas as well. The other piece of this is, it just, intuitively to me, doesn't make sense to treat a problem that's in your system instead of getting rid of the problem itself. We shouldn't have that much water in the system to begin with, but it comes from inflow and infiltration. And you wouldn't want to build treatment facilities that could cost you, again, a very sizable amount. They could, may never be used again. If you never get another 200-year flood, they may not be used for decades. It's kind of like, we didn't have this problem since the 80s. So yes, we had them twice in six months, but it's, it's been a long time.
So this would be a separate?
It would be a treatment train, yeah. Yeah.
So given 40th and Huntington seems to be the epicenter of flow through the community. I think we know that now. And we have east and west of their trunk sewer lines that are running through. Would seem to be more capacity within the trunk lines than into the regular municipal, regular residential lines. Could we backflow from the trunk lines to the residential to provide an additional level of protection?
Oh, in terms of using it for, like, a storage?
Well, not necessarily storage, just more of a road close sign.
Uh, well.
So like, if I live at, just off of, just off of Huntington on St. Paul, and that's my residential line, and right now, the sewer has the ability to back up into my St. Paul line and go up into my floor drain, the trunk lines have, would have more capacity down the way than my residential line into my floor drain. So why wouldn't, I know that people are putting backflow preventers in their own individual floor drains, but it would seem logical to me that, you know, if you want, if you want traffic, or if you want something to go some way, make sure that it doesn't go that way.
You're talking about actually putting check valves into the sanitary sewer system itself?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it's like traffic flow. If I'm driving downtown, downtown and I see a road close sign at 13th and P., I can't go that way. I have to go somewhere else.
Well, water follows the rules of physics. And we put a, if we stop it up here, it's not going to keep the water from coming in the system or people from flushing, and it's just going to keep backing up, and you're going to create the same problem again, I'm afraid.
But I get that. But you have the additional capacity of trying to get it to the point of diverting out at Northeast or going through Teresa Street. Why don't you, instead of, when the capacity builds up and builds up and builds up, why don't you make sure that it goes out? Because your trunk line's going to have more capacity way up throughout the system, right?
Well, yes and no, but I mean, it's raining there, too, and, and flows coming in. I mean, the local lines backed up because the trunk line was completely full.
Yeah.
And it just chain reacted up through the system.
What I'm saying is, make sure that you get to your expected outcome. Have it flow out rather than up. I mean, if you're, if you're, maybe, I'm not an engineer, so.
Flowing it into the trunk line, or?
Making sure that it stays in the trunk line rather than going into the residential line. Because the way your system develops now is it's able to back up throughout.
Oh, right, right. Well.
And it's, and I think you're, that's where that wet well level comes in. Because if you think of that as just, and I always talk about a bowl, and if you, the wet level, the wet well level comes up, it fills the whole area. And that includes surcharging your trunk lines, everything. So as it goes up that system, it fills up that area. It's going to go back up into houses.
My point is that, and maybe I'm making it poorly, is that you have an epicenter right here around East Campus. And if you utilized your additional capacity up, upstream.
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
Outside of that basin.
Exactly. And you made sure that it didn't go into those areas. And I don't know how far out, you'd have to draw a circle around that, but it would seem to me that you could take capacity from other areas of the system in order to get your expected outcome of.
Discharging.
Yeah, I get, I get it. Water's going to go where it's going to go, but if you stop it up at one place.
I think what you're maybe talking about is storage, in a kind of way?
In a, in a little bit of a way.
And that, that would be storage outside of this area so that their water could drain into a storage facility and then?
Yeah. It might run off just a little bit slower, but upstream, you're going to get a, I mean, it's kind of what Ben Higgins is doing.
Mm-hmm.
Detention and retention. You retain a little bit.
And storage is another alternative, actually. Instead of increasing treatment, you can do storage. But again, the amount of storage that you would need for a storm event of this magnitude is, is pretty costly. And I, we can certainly give you some information on that, because I think we've had storage before in the CIP, and we've actually removed it over time.
During the hearings, we talked about some parallel lines. Is that, we were just asking.
Oh, yeah.
You know, is this a way that maybe parallels to what the trunk was saying?
A little bit, yeah.
If you had a lot of the main, and perhaps, too, it could be a combination of having detention, retention type concepts that would at least get you a holding place, you don't contaminate the creeks if possible. I mean, you've got that as the ultimate, you've got the diversion Northeast station. If this might be along some of this particular area, you just run a parallel semi-main that would go to an area, I don't know, something out at the university, and it's cropland or something, I don't know, I don't know. Just something there to hold, and then later you pump it back out once you're past the flood stage.
Sure, sure, that concept would work. Or even a parallel line with this one, so that you have more pipeline for storage of extraneous water that comes into the system.
Okay. Any other questions? Jane?
Donna, you mentioned that the boards around the room are up on Public Works' website. Are you, is this report up on?
I will certainly put it on. I don't think it's on there right now.
Okay. That'd be great.
And this is on the wastewater department. If you go there, you'll see all these boards up in the room. So if you've got any questions, please let me know.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll close the pre-council, take a couple minutes, and we'll come back with the organizational meeting.